One more.
Ready?
Yep.
Okay, I'll call a meeting order then because we're live, so.
Yeah, we were live before, it just wasn't, the camera wasn't on.
Okay.
But it's all.
Yeah, okay, so I wasn't sure, I didn't see it. Okay, now we'll go to adoption of the agenda. Be it resolved that the agenda be adopted, presented with the following deletions. Zoning bylaw seventeen thirty oh four, twenty twenty four, second reading. And northeast zero one ten nineteen W bylaw of obsolescence, the first reading. And what I would also like is to move some items around. I'd like to move three point one. Counsel will agree on the, in the motion, down to number five, point one, and move five point one down to five point two. Because I'm going to declare conflict when we deal with the, anything related to the sanctions. So I'm going to declare conflict and Deputy Reeve can take over the meeting. So I can deal with the, everything else. I'd like to move three point one down.
I'll make that motion.
Yeah, okay, and also the letter three point three, I wasn't involved with that letter, so it'd be unfair to me to, that's the first I seen it, I haven't had time to read it, the Oakland Walnisa letter, so that should go down below two, so I don't want to get involved sending a letter out when I wasn't involved with any of these discussions.
So what did, sorry, I missed the first part, you want to take the three point one and move it down to the in-camera section?
No, to below, just before the in-camera session.
Oh, just before the in-camera?
Before you go in camera, how you deal with it after, but I can't, I don't want to be involved in anything that's related to the Code of Conduct's appeal.
Okay.
I'm going to declare a conflict.
Okay, so three point one now becomes, yeah, I'm sorry, this, we're kind of all over the place too, because, I mean, I, I deleted three point four, but yet I've got a resolution on there, so that you can delete it or table it to the next meeting. So I could remove three point four entirely, remove three point five entirely. And that really only gives us.
I'm okay with that.
Yeah, that really only gives us the three, and then we'll do the three point two first, three point three second, and then three point one third, is that what you're?
Yeah, well, the Oakland Walnisa letter, three point three, because it's related to the Code of Conducts, I want it, I'm negative.
Oh, okay.
I don't want to be involved in that one either, I'm going to declare conflict.
Okay.
But that's the first I seen the letter, so.
So, Mr. Chairperson, really, the only one you'd stick around for then is three point two?
Yeah, three point two, yeah, if we move the other ones down.
Okay.
If that's okay with the mover.
Yeah, I'm fine with that.
Yeah. Okay, we'll give the CEO time to move them around and we'll refresh and then.
Okay.
Good to go. Just tell us when you're ready.
Somebody's got a second to go.
When she's ready to, can I have a second for that motion? Counselor Drowan? Anybody got any questions? All in favor? Carry it. Okay, so when you're ready, we'll refresh here.
Drowan moved it, and who seconded it, sorry?
Yeah, Counselor Drowan seconded, Counselor Ross moved. Just those, ready?
Um, should be good now.
Be good, and it was carried, you got that? Go to three point one. Just call the meeting.
I'm not sure.
Just let me know when you're ready.
Yeah, if you didn't, I don't know if you voted or not.
Yes, we did, it was carried.
Yeah, and it carried unanimously?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
Yep.
Okay. Okay, the next one, be it resolved that the amended agreement would carry lawless for financial administrative services be extended to the next council meeting of January the twenty eighth, two thousand and twenty five. Can I have a mover? Counselor Maxwell moves it, Counselor Drowan seconded it, anybody get any question?
I think we'll have a first now committee meeting ahead of that.
Yeah.
We can discuss.
Yeah. You want to call it, yeah, we'll.
I'll be back, uh.
You can send an email or text to when everybody's available.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah.
When are you guys, uh?
Uh, twenty third.
Yeah. Okay, anybody else got any question? Call for the question, all in favor. Carry it. Okay, so I will hand it over to the Deputy Reeve, because that's the only item, and I'll, I'll be in next door. Can take over the chair here.
So be it resolved that council send a letter.
Just hang on one moment, I'm, for some reason, I'm stuck. No, I'm not stuck, I'm stuck there. What's going on here? I'm not going to worry about that halfway thing that I can't read, so, okay.
Be resolved that council send a letter to the rural municipality of Oakland Walnisa regarding emails from Frank Jones. Moved by Counselor Drowan. Seconded by Counselor Maxwell. I don't really think there's anything in this we can discuss, it's orders, personnel issues. So. Call for the question, then, all in favor? That's carried. Whereas on December thirty first, two.
We have to go in camera. Yeah, first, and then get out of camera and then do this one.
Very good, yeah, I was wondering that. Okay.
I guess I should have put it as five point three, but, yeah.
Okay. Be resolved that in accordance with the Municipal Act, Section one fifty-two, three, council does hereby close the meeting to the public and move in camera at four forty-six PM to discuss the conduct of an investigation under or enforcement of an act or a bylaw, and be it further resolved that council agrees to keep in confidence all matters discussed at this closed session. Moved by Counselor Drowan. Seconded by Counselor Brown. Call for the question, all in favor? Carried, so we're in camera at four forty-six. We gotta go to the other side.
And you want me to leave that on?
Yeah, I might as well leave it off.
Yeah. We should pick them up. Something that's to pay.
Well, it's crazy.
Are you talking, are you?
Yeah, they'd be trapped there all the time. Six thirty, six dollars and thirty cents. They call it twenty one.
How much?
Six dollars and thirty cents. Thirty cents, you're, that's a tax. But six dollars and thirty cents, people, they're.
Yeah, it's for personal interest.
To brush, yeah, brush, yeah, the end of the form, well, always. Always, I mean, it's moving, always, I mean, it's moving, great trucks, all the guys, they move it.
I like the guy that's.
They run, they run the truck, you're in.
Six hundred and two. But that guy didn't, he was having.
Yeah, with.
Ken.
Ken, yeah. It's your Christmas, you're free.
You're confident, right?
Yeah.
Was character, doesn't it?
Yeah. Your dad, uh, British. Three of the British.
Well, we have.
Yeah, three, right. Because that was my hand, from the call. And where did it carry, well. Very regular, very, very, very regular. Where did it go?
So they're all, yeah, they need to all.
Same, it's like, it's dense, it's like a brand.
A lot of data.
So with the Judy's family, that's the, that's we have to get, very, very.
Oh, brush, yeah.
Oh, yeah, he was a rabbit, he was a rabbit. Oh, that was yours, yeah, you ended up in the. Perhaps you retired, yes.
Yeah.
But, yeah, we're still better, I think. You put the whole shoe on the house, put yourself, and then just, but that's what's higher. Yeah, I was not learning that, you know, the neighbor. If it did, it would come home.
Just like, two years. Yeah, just like. Personally, I think. Yeah. I think the same, like, with somebody who's been in the jail two years ago, like, one hundred and ninety-four. I can get their seats. He's. Now you have to. So the train. You know, just. I think it's, I have to, she has to. I was, I was, I have to. You know, in the south.
So I don't wonder what age you can.
There we go.
5.2.
Yeah, yeah. Be resolved that council reconvene in regular open session at 5:10 PM. Moved by councillor Maxwell, seconded by councillor Brown. Call for the question, all in favor? That's carried. Are you ready?
I think Sam is going to return for the I'm not sure, I.
Don't ask me to finish it, so.
Okay, I'm just gonna.
Are you gonna go next?
I'm gonna go next. He said he was just going to be here for the close. He doesn't want to be here for the next
Okay.
resolution, but he has an inquiry, which isn't.
It's not an agent.
Right, so.
Whereas on December 31st, 2024, we received a notice of appeal for complaint number two, number three, and number four for the council members code of conduct regulation from Sam Hofer, and whereas the filing of the appeals stays the sanctions pending the resolution of the appeal, and whereas the notices have been considered confidentially in camera by council, therefore be it resolved that council provides the appeals director with the following requested information. A, a copy of the investigation reports. B, a copy of the resolution sanctioning the member. C, a written submission considered necessary or advisable by council. And D, a copy of the municipality's code of conduct bylaw. Sarah, move there. Moved by councillor Drowhan, seconded by councillor Maxwell. There's nothing to discuss. Call for the question, all in favor? That's carried unanimously. So if you want to I'll make the motion, then motion to adjourn?
Yep. Any questions?
Seconded by.
Oh, Shane, hand his hand up, Ed. Shane. Any questions? All in favor? Carried. Means.